I call this meeting to order. Supervisor Bretherton will lead us in locations for you.
Our Heavenly Father, we come before you this morning with Thanksgiving hearts for your many blessings. We ask that you give us wisdom and guide us in all our decisions. May your revelation knowledge be prevalent in this meeting. Protect our troops who are engaged in protecting us, and God bless them, and God bless the United States of America. Amen.
Amen. If you'll follow me in a place of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair will entertain a motion to go into executive session on June 17, 2013.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Second. In favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. Most carry. Thank you. Committee or legislative reports? Supervisor Johnson, do you have a report on WIR?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman. Myself and Supervisor Watson attended the National Association of Counties Western Interstate Region Conference in Flagstaff. At the conference, we met with three committees I sit on, the Environmental Energy and Land Use Steering Committee, the Cyber Security Task Force, and also with the Arizona-Utah Local Economic Coalition. During the ELU meeting, we discussed air quality standards, the Clean Water Act regulatory program, and our stance on the waters of the U.S. position. The EPA is trying to impose tighter regulations and mandates on counties claiming they fall under the Clean Water Act. For example, the EPA and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers released draft guidance to clarify the definition of protection of waters under the act. If this guidance is passed, it'll cost Mojave County thousands of dollars in new federal permits. Cyber Security Task Force met to go over issues related to cybersecurity in local government. Dave Sterns, Chief Information Officer from Aracopa County, gave a presentation to the group regarding the cybersecurity workforce. Christine Judge, Executive Director of the Trusted Purchasing Alliance for the Center for Internet Security, also gave a presentation to the group regarding how to train county staff when it comes to cybersecurity. During her presentation, Christine stated that the average breach in county information costs about $194 per record stolen. During the conference, Washington County Commissioner Alan Gardner and I held an Arizona-Utah Local Economic Coalition meeting to discuss issues important to both of our states, the recent withdrawal of over the 1 million acres of federal land near the Arizona Strip for the purpose of uranium mining is a critical issue. We also, myself and Supervisor Watson, met with other supervisors and commissioners from around the states regarding the loss of land due to the burial population and possibly trying to get NACO to take a side on that also, so that we don't continue to lose land. Supervisor Watson might want to go over the corrals that were built and not used here in Mojave County.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. The only thing I might add to that is the corrals that were built south of town, I believe the original intent was for the BLM to bring all the animals into that area. Cost was about $1.3 million, and now they're being moved to Florence by the BLM and the Department of Corrections, so the inmates in Florence evidently can work with the burrows and the wild horses. They will leave two pens 100 by 100 feet in length, but it is very discouraging to see this problem essentially being not addressed by the federal government. We currently have a situation in which we have ranchers that are losing their animal units to the wild burrow population. Currently, those numbers right now are 1,500 animals that are out of compliance. Simply in four years, those numbers will increase to about 4,000, at which time you're going to see a number of wild burrows and a number of wild horses out on those ranges that will literally be starving to death. So I'll be doing our best to see if we can't get the Bureau of Land Management, federal government, to recognize their responsibility in caring for these animals. Supervisor Johnson, that was a great report. Thank you. County Administrator's report?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have no report today.
Thank you. Approval of the February 22, 2013 Board of Supervisors meeting. Minutes?
Well, move.
Second. Motion?
Second.
And a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. At this time, we will have the call to the public. For those wishing to address the board, that call to the public regarding matters not on the board agenda must fill out the yellow pad, submit it to the clerk, and request a respeak form. Action taken as a result of the public comments will be limited to responding to criticism, referral to staff, or placing the matter on a future agenda. Comments are restricted to items not on the regular agenda, with the exception of the consent agenda, and must relate to matters within the jurisdiction of the court. I have a number of people signed up for a call to the public. Remind you that if you'll come up, identify yourself and your residence address, and we'll have three minutes for each of you. Mr. Jim Consolato?
Good morning, Supervisors. My name's Jim Consolato. I reside at 3024 Malibu Road, Golden Valley, Arizona. I have two items for a call to the public this morning. The first was just to sort of put on the record a request for an update either at this time or sometime in the future, near future, on the economic development activities here in Mojave County. The last I recall, at the beginning of the year before the new board was seated, I believe it was Travis Linganfelter who was the director. Now I understand we have a new director and some economic development teams, and anything that the Board of Supervisors can share with the public now or later would be greatly appreciated. My second topic is regarding the federal mining lawsuit that was briefly referenced in Supervisor Johnson's report. I just have a concern, I'm not sure how much the board can divulge, but I would, I wonder how much money the county is actually pumping into this effort and into this lawsuit. Are we getting a free ride from the corporations that were joined with in the lawsuit? Are we paying the lion's share of this? And in lieu of everything that I've read, it seems to me that we're riding a dead horse. Obviously, yes, the cause is good, but are we going to ride a dead horse for 20 years? And I've seen that happen before, maybe not for that duration, but I've seen that take place here even in this county for all the wrong reasons. So any information that this board can share with us to enlighten the public on that issue and those concerns would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Consolato. Mr. Robinson?
I'm Stephen Robinson, live at 3439 North Bowie Road, Golden Valley, Arizona. Chairman Watson, Supervisors, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Last week, late last week, I received some information that I had made public records requests as far back as last August, and I greatly appreciate the efforts of Supervisor Angus in helping facilitate that. My frustration is that it took nine months to get some of this material, and so my recommendation is that the board look at, or direct staff, to put together a written policy, because I've heard different statements like they are required to provide information within 10 working days, I've heard that from at least one person, and I'm thinking there needs to be a written policy so there can be no further questions in the future about that, because information that is kept from the public is considered a denial, and that if there's not even an answer, which I didn't receive an answer for as long as, well, I responded twice after September about some of these items that I had requested, and they never, I didn't even receive a written or even a verbal response until late or early, late April, early May. So that's what I'm speaking about, is I think you, I would respectfully request that you agendize the discussion for establishing a written policy for the county, and perhaps put, one suggestion I have is reference or run all those requests, not for fulfillment, but for tracking through the clerk of the board's office. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Sherri Count?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Sherri J. Council, I'm Chairwoman of the Walupi Tribe, I live in Peach Springs, Arizona. I'm here this morning to, in regards to the access road going towards Diamond Bar, on Diamond Bar Road and at the Grand Canyon West. This action of the roadblock and the toll that was, had occurred over the holiday weekend has caused harassment, intimidation, and threatening our tourists that come to our resort. I believe that we need to be able to work this issue out in a reasonable way, and that all tourist attractions are going to be impacted by this, by the fact that people can divert their buses to the South Rim. This also impacts Kingman. Our business brings in tourists, and they spend money in your stores, at your gas stations, at your restaurants, at your hotels and motels, and so the continued benefits are enormous to your town. As good neighbors, we're requesting that you place an injunction on the roadblock and the toll that was set up by Grand Canyon West Ranch. We would also request that as elected officials, we put our personal friendships and interests aside for the better interest of all the businesses in Mojave County, represent the Walupi people, and the endeavors to continue to take care of ourselves, much as Kingman, just the way Kingman has to do. In doing this, we would show the tourists that their best interest is at our heart, and we're here for the tourists that are unsuspected, that come along and have to pay this toll that is outrageous, and so we're asking you, Board of Supervisors, to please work with us, help us as we help you in our business efforts. And we have a long history together. We've made significant progress in working with Kingman, and I hope that you would please assist us, and as we work together to benefit each other. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Chairman Count. If you'll see me after the meeting, Chairman? Jennifer Turner?
Good morning, Board. I'm Jennifer Turner, I'm the CEO of Grand Canyon Resort Corporation, 3793 Heather Avenue, Kingman. I moved here in October to accept a position with the Walupi Tribal Nation, having come from Mount Pleasant, Michigan, and working for a tribe there for over 11 years. Having sat on many boards, economic development boards, working with the township and our county in Mount Pleasant, the tribe, you know, really had a good working relationship with the township there and the county and the city, and I'm really hoping that we can get to that point here. It's very disappointing, coming here from having such a good positive relationship to coming here and seeing what's going on here now. It's very disappointing the way that my staff, the tribal members, and the tribal council has been treated by the sheriff's office over this past weekend over the Diamond Bar Road issue. They've been very confrontational, the board has not supported us, and we're very disappointed by that. To give you an example of the cost, do you see our C is incurring, just from the past Saturday when the toll was originally put up by Mr. Nigel Turner, we've been incurring over $100,000 in toll fees. That does not include what our guests traveling to Grand Canyon West unsuspecting has had to incur, and this does not include our suppliers that have hardships as well with their businesses that are bringing tourists from many different areas and locations. I encourage the county to do what they can to end this and to be supportive of the tribe and the corporation. We bring a lot of tourist dollars into this, and the county needs to be very tourist-friendly. This would help everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Carrie Imus?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Carrie Imus, I live in 555 Canyon View Drive in Peach Springs, Arizona, and I just want to echo what Chairwoman Count and our CEO Turner has mentioned, but I want to go to the document that was published in the minor on February 9 of this year by Supervisor Buster D. Johnson, and what's very disheartening, and when reading that minor, the article in the minor on February 9, it clearly showed, told me that because of Mojave County not having the revenue, not having the, I guess, amount of money, and one of the prior districts went out, went belly up, and they were in the red by $400,000. And at that time, it appeared that Supervisor Johnson did say, you know, talked about setting up a toll on Diamond Bar, and, you know, we're, this road is public, it has been public, and Walupi does not own the land, but Walupi has pumped a lot of money into this road. Mojave County did not spend one money paying for the Phase 1. We're now doing Phase 2, and it's very, very disheartening, very disappointing, because we are part of Mojave County, and we do pay taxes, and we are the second largest employer in Mojave County next to the hospital, and, you know, a lot of people benefit, residents in Dolan Springs, Meadview, you know, they get businesses when our buses come from Vegas. And I just really wish that every one of the board members that are sitting here will be objective and focused in the benefit of the whole county and not just certain people and who you have friendships with. You have to be objective, and clearly this document is quite not that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Imus. Brenda Halverson?
Hi, my name is Brenda Halverson, and I'm from 1265 Airport Road in Boulder City, Nevada, and I'm here to represent Papillon Helicopters, Grand Canyon Helicopters, Grand Canyon Airlines, Scenic Airlines, Grand Canyon Coaches, GrandCanyon.com, Bus Tours, and most recently have been helping the Walupis out with their park and ride bus services from Dolan Springs to Grand Canyon West. And our company promotes tours to Grand Canyon West internationally, domestically, and through internet services, and we give prices up to one year in advance. And we packaged, we have packaged this year to nearly 40,000 bus passengers, and have recently been met with unexpected tolls as much as $500 per bus as we drive to Grand Canyon West. And these tolls have not been included in our pricing, and they're starting to damage our company's reputations with its customers. The construction of the new road has been stopped, and I don't understand why, as we've been driving this road for nearly 25 years. And I urge the board to come to some conclusion on allowing them to complete the construction of their new road, to end the ridiculous tolls that are being forced on our customers right now, and help the Walupi Nation and their economic development. Thank you.
Danielle Tahama?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Danielle Tahama, I reside at 2795 Cimarron Drive here in Kingman. I recently moved from Oregon, working for other tribal enterprise there. I'm currently the Marketing Director, PR Person for Grand Canyon Resort Corporation, and I'm here to echo what's already been said, but touch on a couple other points. There's a potential for a major concern, and I just want to go on record notifying the Supervisors, that this toll that we're seeing on Diamond Bar Road is creating a negative view of Mojave County and as well as Kingman. And it's counteracting and combating a lot of what we're trying to do with the county now. We're currently working on cooperative efforts with Joshua Noble and Go Kingman to merge, and we have been doing that for a couple months. It's counteracting everything that we've been doing, everything that we have planned in the future, and the negativity is going to create a ripple effect. It's going to create a loss of jobs potentially because of the lack of revenue that's being brought in, and the loss of revenue that we're already seeing from our own perspective as well as our suppliers. That loss of jobs will create a loss of tax revenue, it will create a loss of income to our local schools. I have children, I pay taxes, the local schools benefit from my children attending the schools here. Some other things that concern me from a marketing and PR perspective, as I said, I've worked with several tribes in the state of Oregon. I've always had a very good working relationship, and as our CEO Jennifer Turner stated, our goal moving into the future is to work cooperatively with the county and state and local governments to create a community that focuses on tourism that'll benefit all of us here. I seriously hope you consider helping us with our plight with Diamond Bar Road. Thank you.
Thank you. April Tinhorn?
Good morning. My name is April Tinhorn, and I live at 3675 Harvard Drive in Oceanside, California, 92056. Good morning, Mojave County Board of Supervisors, thank you for this time. I come before you today as a concerned enrolled Walupi Tribal Member. I've obviously traveled some distance to, just mainly I've been probably like you looking at everything that's online about the blogs, what's going on with the Diamond Bar Road issue, and it just doesn't make sense to me. If this were any other public road in the county, I, I'm just curious, would it be getting the same non-treatment? So my question quite simply to you is, as the Board of Supervisors, are you, are you going to stop the toll taking on this public road? Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, and thank you for traveling such a long distance. Rudy Clark? Rudy Clark? Aaron Forrest?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors and staff of Mojave County. Basically, I was hired 10 years ago to construct the Diamond Bar Road. I moved down from Washington, state of Washington, as an engineer. We have been in conflict with Nigel for all of that 10 years. He filed a lawsuit against the county and BIA about 10 years ago, and he filed a protest to the EIS. That process went through about five years of legal work between the county, BIA, and Nigel. The tribe was not party to that conflict, although we were the hurt party. Anyway, I don't want to, I want to just give a little bit of history, this has been long ongoing. We thought everything was settled when the tribe paid $750,000 to Nigel Turner for a right-of-way across his property. Then he signed an agreement with the county and the federal government that we assumed at that time that everything was worked out. Well, when we started construction of Phase 2, now note that we already did Phase 1, which is about the first four and a half miles, and there was no conflict then. When we first started Phase 2, he, of course, set up the toll and filed actually a request for a restraining order to stop the construction of the road. I have two questions I'd like to have an answer from. One is about three weeks ago, we met with county staff in a county office, and the question came up about the right-of-way, and we specifically asked, what would they do? And we were told by county staff that, that the right-of-way has not been transferred, there's a legal way of doing that, and, and I'm running out of time, so I'll speed up. Anyway, at that time, we were told that they would stop him from doing any toll road and whatnot, and then the following week was a 180-degree turn, and I'd like to know what happened during that week. The other thing I'd like to say real quickly is his ongoing battle with the tribe has been long, over 10 years, and if, we don't want a battle, we want to solve things and move ahead, but why is he penalizing the traveling public? Why, these people are on vacation from Minnesota, from Michigan, from California, and he's charging them money who are totally innocent, and I think that leaves a very bad taste in a lot of people that travel in his mouth about going to Mojave County and then having beach paying toll road fees to enter into a tourist destination. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest. Michelle Wathamaji? Michael Wathamaji?
Michael.
Michael? There we go.
Kamiu Natcha, Michael J. Watanami. My name is Michael J. Watanami from the Walupi Tribe. I stand before you as not only a citizen, but as a veteran during the Vietnam era. I have another brother back here that's a Vietnam veteran era person here as well. I come before you to appeal your thoughts and your direction in not ignoring the situation that we're in today. You know, I've been reading some literatures and commentaries, editorials in the medias and so forth, and it's misleading. It's misleading that we are being targeted to not being taxpayers, targeted to be not contributing to Mojave County. That's incorrect. In the Great Depression, if you can remember the Great Depression, unemployment rate was a staggering 7.6. United States country was even worse. Every day, the Walupi people, we have over 60% unemployment rate. What do you have in Mojave County? Grand Canyon West employs at least 450 employees. 54% of them are members of the community of Kingman, Dolan Springs, and Meadview. So don't tell me or write in letters in the medias and say that we don't contribute to you, Mojave County. That's not true. I come here, I buy food, I have to pay taxes. I'm not tax exempt just because I'm a veteran, just because I'm an Indian. Maybe you are, I'm not. You know, so I want you to understand something. The revenue that we receive out there, it goes to everyone. We don't have homes to put everybody into a home. We have to allow families to take other families into the home. We have problems that that money that we use, that we think as revenue, is not only for the community of Mojave County, but for our local community Peach Springs. You know, I've been a long life- You know, I've been a long lifetime member of community, this community. I grew up here. I even graduated here in the 70s. So I know a lot of people in this community because of who I worked with in this community, Mr. T R Orr. And I want you to understand that and think about what I'm saying, that we do contribute, and from now on, I don't want to read anything negative about our people not contributing to this community, Mr. Johnson. And yes, I'm looking right at you. Thank you.
Rudy Clark. Is there a Mr. Rudy Clark that would like to speak? Okay. All right. That is the conclusion of the call of the public. And we have a presentation now from Mr. Nick Hunt for the FEMA National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System Class Six. Mr. Hunt.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors. Greatly appreciate the opportunity for this presentation. I just want to go over briefly what it is. Most people don't know what CRS is. Mojave County has been awarded an improved Class Six rating by the FEMA National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System. That's what CRS is. This new rating will place Mojave County among the very best few best-managed counties and cities in the state of Arizona. More importantly, it will result in 20% cost savings in flood insurance rates for Mojave County properties located in the flood plains. This improved rating recognizes our recent achievements in flood plain management and flood plain hazard mitigation. I would like to briefly highlight here just some of our recent accomplishments which helped to get us here. We have been working with FEMA to update and correct the FEMA flood plain maps. FEMA has recognized our effort and awarded us with grants. That happened only in two communities in the state of Arizona in the past three years. These grants were used to upgrade and correct the FEMA maps in certain areas and to implement a community outreach and discovery program, allowing us to work in greater cooperation with our incorporated cities and surrounding communities. We have implemented a top-notch flood warning system for the entire county. The National Weather Service recognized our county as a storm-ready community. They're using our resources here. They're relying on us. We have developed and installed a modern state-of-the-art land surveying network system benefiting county projects as well as private developments. Implement a state-of-the-art engineering design standards and drainage design manual for the county. This is just as good as any other communities in state of Arizona. We have started a channel and infrastructure maintenance program utilizing local contractors. We have performed strategic planning for the major population areas of the county to identify areas of improvements. Completed several flood hazard mitigation projects such as detention basins in Horizon Six, Tierra de Rio, and Queer Run, and many others. We have worked closely with the county building inspection division and improved the county's building code effectiveness grade, resulting in insurance savings to property owners. And with that, I would like to ask the board to receive the plaque awarding Mojave County with the improved rating from the Arizona Department of Water Resources Program Manager, Brian Cosson, and from the Chairman of the Arizona Flood Plain Management Association, who is our own flood plain programs manager, Shannon Somers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you like us to come up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
If the board will assemble for a picture. I'm going to take a couple, make sure everybody's eyes are open. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda, items number five through 32. Supervisor Johnson, do you have anything wishing to pull? Supervisor Angus?
Twelve and fourteen.
Supervisor Brotherton?
I think fourteen. Oh, yes, I do. Yes, I do. Okay, yeah, item six.
Supervisor Moss?
I'm none.
Okay. Chair would entertain a motion to approve items five through 32 with the exceptions of six, twelve, and fourteen. With eleven being removed, Mr. Chairman? And eleven, yes, eleven removed.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, accepting items six, twelve, and fourteen, with the understanding that item eleven has been removed.
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Item number six. Motion for discussion?
Yes, this parcel happens to be kind of in my area over there.
We have a motion for discussion?
A motion to discuss.
Second.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Sorry.
Okay, I'm not seeing any plan or anything. I don't know if this is going to be a site-built home, if it's going to be a mobile home. I know that some time ago, someone made an application, and they just about got a rezoning or a zoning permit, and they were going to set up a used mobile home in the area for the second residence. I just think that there should be some sort of plan submitted with this so that we could really know what it is that they're planning on putting up. I would hate to see something unsightly be put there. Okay, Nick.
Mr. Hunt?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Brotherton, thank you for asking the question. This is a zoning use permit at this time, and this starts the process. And so the applicant has the option that may have already prepared the residence, or they can do it in the future. And they obviously have to comply with all the building code requirements and obtain the necessary building permits for all that. And at that time, I was not aware when the zoning use permit came through whether they already have the permits. That question was asked by the Planning Zoning Commission, and at that time, we were told that all the building permits were already obtained or will be obtained. And that's all I know to answer that, and I'm not sure if the applicant is here, maybe he can put more lights on it whether the permits have been obtained. But there's no exception to those.
May I ask a question of Mr. Hunt? Certainly. Supervisor Moss?
But I think what Supervisor Brotherton was getting at is that wouldn't, permit process would not come back to the board. This is the only time this item is brought to the board's attention. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
I just hate to see those parcels split out there. There's a lot of acre parcels. I live on one of them in that area, and I just hate to see this start happening and not really knowing what's going to go on there.
We have a gentleman standing behind probably the applicant. Would you like to speak, sir?
I am the applicant, and this is going to be a residence, 1,600, living, permanent, not a mobile home. I didn't bring a sketch or the plans, but I do have a site plan here. And it's going to be a stick-built home. Any more questions?
May I ask a question?
Supervisor Moss?
Did you say it was going to be a 1,600 square foot home?
Yes.
I believe the resolution before us, perhaps I'm wrong, it'll be a maximum of 1,000 square feet. Am I reading that incorrectly, Mr. Hunt? Under page two, whereas number one, shall be no greater than the one-half the floor area of the primary residence up to a maximum of 1,000 square feet.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Moss, I don't have that number in front of me. Maybe Chris Ballard has that. May I ask her to answer that question?
Certainly. Ms. Ballard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Moss, members of the board, the applicant's proposal is to, there's an existing garage with the residence on the property at present. The applicant's proposal is to construct a larger structure, and the larger structure that will be constructed will indeed become the primary residence with the residence and the garage becoming the secondary. So this happens occasionally where the secondary is actually already on the property. What they're going to be doing is constructing the primary. Now, the applicant has told us they will construct. We assume upon reading those terms, construct, we assume it's an onsite build.
What's the square footage of the current primary residence?
It's a little over 500 square feet. It's like an efficiency apartment that we live in. And the new
Backwards.
The new residence is for my parents, so I don't have to send them to a nursing home. We hope to take care of them. My father is going on 85. My mother's 81. That's the purpose of it.
And the residence that's there now is about 500 square feet?
The living area inside my garage is, yes. It's a one-bedroom, one-bath, combination kitchen, living room.
Any further questions for the applicant?
I do have one further question for the applicant. If we were to pass this resolution that made the requirement that the new construction be, what's termed stick-built, would that cause you any hardship? Because I understand from your previous comments, that's what you were intending to build.
Right. It's an on-slab. It's actually 3,000 square foot under roof with the garage and the patios, but the living is approximately 1,600. Two-bedroom, two-bath.
Okay. Well, I do think that probably we should put that requirement, that it is going to be a site-built.
Oh, definitely. I'm ready to go for permit.
Okay.
Very good.
Okay, I make a motion that we accept it with the stipulation that the residence will be site-built.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions? The clerk? Okay. There being no further questions. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried. Item number 12.
Motion to discuss.
Second. Motion and a second for discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried. Supervisor Angus?
This item, fixing the roads up on Oatman Highway was before us a few months ago. We were very happy. The gold mine up there was paying a very large percentage of this fix of this road. They are the main utilizers of it, and I believe at that time, they were paying probably close to 70% of it. I was surprised to see this item, a change order, and I'd like some explanation. And who changed it? Why is the county absorbing all that cost? Is there anyone who could speak to this?
Yes. Steva, Mr. Lutowski?
Good morning, Chairman Watson, members of the board, Supervisor Angus. This concerns the emergency repair of a section about three miles of Oatman Highway between mileposts 25 and 28 leading to the Gold Road Mine. On March 1st, Public Works developed engineering plans and specifications as well as a bid schedule with quantities assessing the scope of improvements that were required to carry out this project, and then working with procurement and emergency procurement since ensued. Thirty-four days elapsed between March 1st, when the county engineering plans were prepared, and April 3rd, when the project went to construction. The county undertook a unit price contract to facilitate adjustments to the actual quantity of work that was actually completed as part of this project. And during that 34-day period, there was in fact a 41% increase in the amount of pavement repair that was completed by the contractor in order to ensure a fully repaired roadway of that three-mile section.
So you're saying that in 31 days, there was $75,000 more worth of damage? So every month, you're saying that we were incurring, that road was incurring $75,000 worth of damage?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Angus, during that 34-day period, there was approximately a 41% increase in the amount of surface area requiring repair, and that in turn translated to the $75,000 that the contractor had claimed.
Just for my edification here. So the contractor comes to you and says, hey, there's a lot more damage, and I need $75,000 more? Is that how it works?
The contractor requests a change order from the county under the terms of the contract, and as a result, both parties, the contractor as well as the county, had measured the final quantity that was requested by the contractor.
And the mine didn't have to take a percentage of that cost at all?
Between the time that the mine and the county had contemplated a reimbursement, the mine had committed to additional monies for reimbursement, and that end result was $120,000 to be reimbursed in $5,000 monthly intervals for the next two years. Originally, the mine had committed to an initial proposal of $90,000. So they did increase their reimbursement to the 120.
Wait, wait. Originally, when we voted on this a couple of months ago, you're saying that the mine was only, had agreed to pay $90,000?
Yes, based on initial discussions with the mine, they had proposed a $90,000.
All right. That's not what I remember, but I don't know. I just, you know, these change orders, you know, it's not my deal, but it seems pretty high for 31 days.
I have a question.
Can I first ask mine? What occurred in that 30-some-odd days to require the additional payment? Was there a flooding issue? Was there, what occurred to require the additional? Mr. Lutowski?
Chairman Watson, members of the board, Public Works Engineering quantified the scope of the damage that had occurred through the month of February, and it resulted in our quantification of the damaged areas, and we measured it by basically our quantification of the damaged areas, and we measured it by basically square yards, area of roadway within that three-mile section, and we quantified that on March first. What had happened during those subsequent thirty-four days was hauling, the hauling of tailings from the Gold Road Mine's stockpile to the area by which those tailings were being processed. So it was just a matter of additional hauling, and that road being as fragile as it was during the March first time period, when it was mutually determined that we needed to move forward with a fix and as soon as possible, that road was so fragile at that point that we just saw some additional areas of distress and literal loss of pavement structure ensue during that time.
I think, I'm a little closer. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Mr. Hendricks?
I just wanted to have Steve make a clarification so that there is no misrepresentation or misunderstanding of the facts as Supervisor Angus understood them. Your original discussion with the mine was for ninety thousand dollars, however, when you brought that item to the board for the original approval, the mine had agreed to the one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, as Supervisor Angus remembers. Isn't that correct?
Chairman Watson, Mr. Hendricks, to the best of my recollection, there was an amendment to the agreement, the reimbursement agreement between the county and the mine, the amendment being the increased reimbursement by the mine, capping at the one hundred and twenty thousand.
Thank you.
So when you brought this, you know, when we voted on it, this was before the change? There was no change. It was one hundred and twenty. So what you just said before was kind of wrong.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Angus, yes, to clarify, the amended agreement was brought before the board at the April third meeting, which would have set the reimbursement amount as existed. The original agreement that was struck between the county and the mine was reflective of the March first Public Works estimate of repaired quantities of repaired areas. So we were noticing that the road was suffering increased deterioration over the course of the month of March, and consulted with the mine as far as how they wish to address that with the county with some increased reimbursement. But yes, it did, it was set in April, and subsequently, this change order reconciles the additional damage, but the mine has not participated in the additional funding.
Yes. Supervisor Brotherton?
Okay. The contractor, he's done this for quite some time. I'm familiar with him. Did he think that the traffic was going to completely stop while he was doing these repairs? Or was that part of the agreement, that they were going to stop hauling while he was doing the repairs?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Brotherton, the way that the contract was presented was to enable for traffic to continue to utilize the, this section of Oatman Highway. We worked, and I do give the mine credit in assisting us in limiting the amount of hauling that did occur, but we did not put, you know, in the contract, from what I can recall, any restrictions on specific hauling, but we tried to work with the mine to limit hauling within a certain time period, and I'm not aware exactly if that completely shut down the hauling during the time that the project was being carried out, but the mine did cooperate. I think what they did is they tried to increase their hauling before the project started on April third.
My point is, I think there was more than one bid on this job, was there not?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Brotherton, I'm unaware as to how many bids came in.
Because this brings this amount up to two hundred and fifty-four thousand, two eighty-four ten, rather than the original one seventy-nine, ten, and I just would think that a contractor that had been in this kind of business for this long would have anticipated that there was going to be additional traffic and additional damage on that road, being as fragile as it was, and it just seems to me that that should have been taken into consideration. I just don't like to see someone come in with a bid and then after the fact, come in with another seventy-five thousand dollars of work that has been done. I don't think that's quite right, and if there was a bid that was less than two fifty-four, two eighty-four on this project, it's not fair to that company that might have bid and taken those things into consideration. I noticed they talked about the flagging and all of that, because I would think that that would be very apparent upfront. So that's my question.
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Brotherton, I should point out that this was a unit-price contract, that the contractor actually bid a unit price for most of the bid items that required placing materials, such as the pavement repair as well as the striping, et cetera. So the county bases change order amount on the unit price that was bid by the contractor, so this was not in fact a lump-sum price.
May I ask a question?
Supervisor Moss.
Was the unit price for the asphalt, or was it for the labor, or was it for both?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Moss, the unit price was for equipment, labor, and material, for the placement of asphalt.
Who, was it the county or the contractor who estimated the cost or the amount of the pure unit price, the amount of quantity that had to go into this project?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Moss, both the contractor and the county measured the amount of area that was repaired, and the county has agreed with the amount that was assessed by the contractor.
I'm talking about the initiation of work. When they said, we need one hundred units or however many we need to repair this job, and then we find out that we're forty-one percent wrong. Who determined the initial number of units?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Moss, Mojave County Public Works prepared the initial quantities on March first, and we have seen since that March first to April third timeframe, accelerated deterioration of the road, but Public Works estimated the initial quantity by which the bids were based.
I jump in, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Johnson?
This was awarded on April first?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, I believe the award, yes, it was April first.
When did construction begin?
April third.
And how much construction? You said there was a lag of thirty-three dead days or something? What caused that?
Supervisor Johnson, the timeframe that I was referring to was the time that Public Works quantified the extent of damage, and that was March first. That was at the time when we prepared the project plans and specifications for the purpose of bidding the project out through the emergency procurement.
Okay, well, then that would have coincided with our April first meeting, so why at that time didn't we say, because we kicked out the laws and did this on an emergency procurement, at that time, I think that would have alleviated the board's concerns. We'd have said, hey, in the meantime, was there a reason why that wasn't brought to the board at the April first meeting?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Johnson, Public Works had not conducted another engineering evaluation of the extent of the damage that had occurred as of April first. It was unknown at the time, April first, as far as what additional damage had occurred to the pavement.
I guess the other question would be, how did we let this road get so far out of hand when we have a transportation commission and all these other, we have a road project? We set up our priorities for all of our roads to be done. How did this one section of road get so far out of hand that it deteriorates in thirty days?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Johnson, excellent question. The road deteriorated as a pure function of the heavy truck traffic that commenced hauling operations in the summer of 2012. Mojave County Public Works conducts an engineering inspection of all of our paved roadways on an annual basis, and we had not seen any noticeable or accelerated deterioration of this segment of Oatman Highway until such time as that hauling operation began in the summer of 2012, and that was the sole cause.
Does the Oatman Road have a haul limit on it? Is it set for X amount of weight?
Supervisor Johnson, no, it does not have a truck weight limit.
So any amount of truck weight can run on Oatman Road?
Less than, up to the state regulations for oversized overweight trucks. So there's no regulation more stringent than that.
Thank you.
Did you have anything to add?
Only standard bid process would be that when we start to go out to bid, engineering goes out and assesses the quantities the best they can, and that's what engineering always does. Then the bids are static until we award the bids. We really can't, in the middle of the bid process, it's very difficult to come and change the parameters for the bidders, because they're bidding on a certain quantity. What we do is we keep that fairly static, and like Steve said, there was no indication at that time that we needed to change the quantity. So we had a unit-price bid. I believe the only question that we have right now is Steve's recommendation not to go out for a new contract and to utilize the established unit-price bid for the contract, and I believe that's what he's recommending that we do, because we've established the minimum cost to have those repairs through bid process, and we're certainly allowed that flexibility to move forward in that direction.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Supervisor Moss.
Is the roadway currently repaired?
Supervisor Moss, yes, it has been completely repaired.
So this isn't a matter of going out for a new bid. This is a matter of paying for an unforeseen cost. Am I right about that?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Moss, it was an unforeseen condition, increase in expense, and what Steve's relayed is that we are paying the established unit-price cost for the increase in scope of work that was caused.
But before the contractor actually begun work, it was obvious at that time that the contract amount would increase, but the decision was made to get it done now and not come back to the board and ask for, or not send it back out for a rebid. Is that what your comment was about, Mr. Hendricks, in your initial comment?
Yes, prior to award, you can do an addendum to a contract, or you can let the contract proceed, and I believe the assessment that we had additional work was after the contract was awarded, and-
But before work began?
I'm not sure. We'll have to ask Steve.
Well, Supervisor Moss, the ultimate quantification of the pavement area that was repaired occurred during the actual project, when the work was, had been completed by the contractor.
Well, I mean, the contractor knew he was incurring additional costs from day one, because his letter says, some guys were working fourteen-hour days because of the initial, because of the increased quantities, and he needs his overtime reimbursed, et cetera, in order to get it done in the ten-day period. So he knew from day one, and the question is, did we know from day one whether they were going to have this great increase in quantities?
Supervisor Moss, the contractor had made certain provisions by means of managing the project. There was, my understanding, dialogue between the contractor and the county as the project ensued, and it was only about a ten-day project, that ultimately, when the contractor and the county measured the quantities that were repaired, both parties found that additional pavement repair was completed above the quantity that was stipulated in the contract, so.
And the contract itself required or allowed for, I think, what, approximately a twenty percent increase without going through a change order? Is that right, or is my memory wrong?
Supervisor Moss, what I can relate with regard to the contract is when any particular bid item exceeds twenty percent, it enables the contractor to negotiate a change in certain fixed costs, such as the traffic control, for instance, which I think that relates to his comment with regard to the additional fourteen-hour days that his staff worked.
So he gets more, he gets paid more for the asphalt, and he gets paid more for the traffic or traffic control, because the unit price exceeded the twenty percent of what was estimated?
Correct, yes.
Further questions?
I still, excuse me.
Supervisor.
I still would like to, I'd like to know what maybe some of the other bids are, because I feel that maybe one of the other contractors might have figured some of this in, in looking at the job and knowing what there was involved. I'd be interested in knowing that.
Joy, I think it's on the backup data. Was there only one bid received on this project?
Yes, that's correct, Supervisor Moss. And regarding the one bid, we did, because it was considered an emergency procurement under the procurement code, we did have latitude to basically just go to one contractor and get a price, but what instead we did was we offered out an informal bid process under a emergency procurement, and it was a much shortened time. We did just send it out to local bidders. There were six of them that we invited that had business here in the county and that, you know, provided this type of service, and the procurement officer that was responsible for this contacted individually each one of them, made sure that they did get a copy of the emergency procurement formal bid, and she reminded them prior to the bid deadline, you know, just to let them know that it was coming up, and we did still only get the one bid, and when she contacted them after the fact, most of their response was that it was, they didn't have the time to be able to either put it together or to be able to manage the project in the timeframe that the county needed it completed by. And at that time, when it was before you, on April first, it was for ratification. We had actually already issued the notice to, not the notice to proceed, but the intent to award to this contractor. However, we couldn't start the project until we had his bond in place, so we were waiting for payment performance bonds before we could let the Public Works people issue the notice to proceed.
So you're saying that the job was on hold because of the contractor's bond? So during that, so during that time, these extra things were accumulating?
That probably would have been part of it. But yeah, we don't typically, on these large projects that are over fifty thousand, we typically don't allow the project to proceed until we have risk management approval, bond verification, insurance compliance, as a protection for risk against the county.
Well, if that's correct-
Supervisor Moss.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. If that's correct, isn't part of the delay then associated with the contractor and not the process that we were engaged in?
Basically, we allow them ten days in order to submit their insurance and the bonding, and we, you know, he did get all that information to us within the ten days, and then we have to wait for bond verification from the bonding agency, as well as the risk management to sign off saying that the bonds have been verified, they are in full force and effect, and that they do meet all of the insurance requirements that risk management has set for them. So it typically takes longer than that ten days.
Thank you, Ms. Drew. Any further questions?
That's all. I don't have any more.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Lutowski. In this portion of the roadway, is there a spring in the sidewall of this road?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Is there any water?
Oh. Mr. Chairman, I do believe that there is a culvert crossing or two through this area. During the period in March or April, we were unaware of any significant or any measurable weather events that, whether it contributed to any water-related flooding damage to the roadway. This purely was attributed to the heavy truck loading. Just one loaded truck exerts a load equivalent to two hundred passenger cars, so.
Okay. Are we going to take an action in order to control the weight of the trucks on these roads in the future?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I do not have a recommendation to put forward to restrict or further restrict more stringent heavy truck regulations above what state law currently prescribes for oversized overweight vehicles.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Supervisor Moss.
As the roadway is currently sits, the repairs are constructed, it's now able to bear the weight of these heavy trucks. Would that be a fair assumption?
Supervisor Moss, yes. For the time being, what we're seeing in the field is that the repairs have mitigated all of the- all of the localized failures that were previously reported and repaired.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr.
Supervisor Moss, question for Mr. Hendricks.
Mr. Ekstrom, the contractor appears to have done the work, and it appeared to do so with the approval of Public Works. We really don't have much, do we have any choice but to ratify this decision? Because otherwise, they sue, and they still get the money. Is that the correct assumption?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Moss, it is a correct assumption. We have no real defense to not paying it.
Thank you, Ms. Moss. Thank you, Mr. Ekstrom. I'll make a motion to ratify the change order number one to the emergency procurement contract number 13-EP-02 on the Oakland Highway of repairs to mile, mile post 25 through 28.
Second.
A motion and a second. Question?
I will, may I make a comment, Mr. Chairman? I, my sense from the board is that we don't like seeing such significant change orders. And I'm going to vote for this because I think we necessarily don't have any choice. But I would hope in the future that we don't have these surprises delivered to us, to this extent, anyway. So, I think that's what, the sense I'm getting from some of the comments, so the public's clear. But, anyway, I don't think we have any choice, so I would, I do support this motion.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Item number 14.
Motion to discuss?
Second. We have a motion and a second for discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried for discussion.
Okay. Well, now I'm going to say some nice things. Just for some background, this, the Arnold Plaza, had been approved for demolition sometime last year at a significant cost, kind of, just as a, kind of a coincidental point, the same contractor that we were just speaking about. And at that time, I'm going to say divine intervention came in. One of the contractors put in a protest, and the whole, the whole thing was stopped. And I was very pleased to see that we're thinking outside the box, we're thinking of different ways that we can do this, that it's not going to cost us all that much money. And I see that you now had put out some, what is it called? A bid, and now you're going to do an appraisal, and maybe we can sell that property and actually, not only make some money, but generate some revenue in sales. So, I'm very pleased about this, and so I wanted to point that out, and thank you.
Comment, Mr. Hendricks?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Angus, you're absolutely right when, I believe, and excuse me if my numbers aren't correct, when we did go out for a demolition project on this, I believe we're 500,000 or 600,000 was the bids that came in for that demolition. And there was quite a bit of discussion in the public that, why don't we sell this? And what we requested procurement to do is to go out for an RFQ, or a request for proposals for anybody wishing to purchase this property. Unfortunately, we didn't get any, any takers, but right after the process, the procurement process closed, we were contacted by two individuals who were interested in purchasing the property. So, thanks to yours and the board's leadership and actual direction on this item, we're asking the board to give us an approval to appraise this. And even if we, it appraises for no value, the county would be a half a million to $600,000 to the good with this project in retrospect of demolishing it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. Thank you.
I make a motion to direct staff to have Arnold Plaza property appraised by qualified independent, I can't even read my, fee appraiser establishing a minimum price and hold a public auction on behalf of Mojave County Procurement Department.
Way of motion?
Second.
Yeah, a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I would have is that, that's being brought back to the board after the auction. We approve any sale.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, yes, yes, sir, that's correct.
Your question?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Supervisor?
If it does come back, if it does go to public auction, maybe this is Mr., better one for Mr. Ekstrom, it would be an as-is sale because it doesn't look like the building's perhaps the best in the world.
Mr. Moss, Mr. Moss, it'll be as-is, all full of indemnifications and such.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. There being no further questions. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. That brings us all the way down to public hearings. We'll open the public hearing, discussion, possible action regarding the adoption of Board Supervisor Resolution number 2013-062, rescinding cause of property to revert from an AR 1.5 acre residential, one and a half acre lot size zone to the previous lot size zone AR 10 agricultural residential 10 acre minimum lot size for the failure to meet the conditions as approved, as specified in Board Resolution number 2012-031, which approves the rezone for assessors parcel number 306-24-024C in the Golden Valley vicinity north of Balsa Drive and east of Verdy Road, Mojave County, Arizona. Recommended rescission, the commission recommended rescission by unanimous vote.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the, first, I believe I must close the public hearing. Close the public hearing. Anyone wish, before I close the public hearing, is there anyone wishing to speak to item number 34? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and...
I make motion to approve.
We have a motion?
I second the motion to rescind.
In a second, to rescind. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Item number 35, open the public hearing, discussion, possible action regarding the adoption of Board Resolution number 2013-063, determine the compliance with the schedule for the development as specified in Board Resolution numbers 2010-041 and 2011-058, which approve the rezone and extension of time for rezone of the assessors parcel numbers 317-49-029 and 317-49-054 through, dash, 056. By removing the condition number six from the Board of Resolution number 2010-041 in the White Hills vicinity, east of Highway 93 and north of White Hills Road. Commission recommended deleting condition number six of the Board of Resolutions numbers 2010-041 by a unanimous vote. Anyone wishing to speak to this public hearing? Close the public hearing?
I move that we approve the deletion of condition six and, as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
We have a motion to...
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion, Mr. Chairman? Supervisor Johnson?
Ms. Ballard going to handle the, Ms. Ballard here. Ballard, this has been going on for quite some time. Now they're coming back and removing item number six, which is basically to bring it back to us. Do you know why this has continued, continued on and on without any movement?
Mr. Chairman, let me check the application from the applicant. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Johnson, the applicant actually did not respond to us when we sent them the letter notifying them that their conditions had not been met and that they had, that basically we were proceeding to revoke their rezone. The reason that this particular item came forward with a recommendation to remove item six is because the policy, the county policy that governs these types of actions notes that if the rezone is taking place in a location where that zone is logical, that we will not put that condition on. In reassessing the situation, the department felt that this was a logical place for the zone being requested and that the hard zoning should be, should be allowed to take place.
Thank you. I guess the only problem I have is people come to us in 2010 for this rezone, have done nothing and have not answered. When you've tried to contact them, and I'm not in support of continuing something if the people don't respond to us. The only reason I'd be opposed.
And your course of action, are we still in the public hearing process?
No, I believe we have a motion and a second.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion.
Can I ask Ms. Ballard? It's really the, the Planning and Zoning Commission and your department has recommended the deletion of six. As I understand what your just recent words, is that because you think the zoning, which was obtained in 2010, is actually the most proper use of that area of ground? Am I understanding that correctly?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Moss, members of the board, I'm a little hesitant to say it's the best zone for that particular location. It is a logical zone for that location, and it seems to fit with the location. You know, there might be a listing of uses that would be, you know, more applicable, but those were not, that, those were not the uses requested by the applicant at that time.
Thank you.
I guess, Mr. Chairman. If I may, Supervisor Moss, we have a lot of people that come before us that want land changes, zoning changes, and obviously, it's, if you're going to go sell a piece of residential land, it's cheaper. If it's a business zone, it's a lot more money. And to me, if somebody wants to come in, they buy a piece of land, they want to put a commercial building on it, that's fine with me. But if they just want to come and reason on their land for speculation, that takes away from the other taxpayers who have bought business land or land that can be used for commercial purposes. So, that's the only reason I oppose.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Call for the questions?
I was just going to comment, I think that Supervisor Johnson's philosophy on that point is actually very good. I hadn't considered it from that perspective. Thank you, Supervisor Johnson.
Okay, we have, we do have a motion. In a second, I believe, on the floor. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Chair will be voting yes. Item number 36, open the public hearing, discussion, possible action, adoption of Board of Resolution number 2013-064, rescind and cause of property to revert from C2 general commercial zone to the previous zone of AR-36 agricultural residential acre minimum lot size for failure to meet the conditions of approval as specified in Board of Resolutions number 2010-042 and 2011-052, which approved the rezone and extension of time for rezone in the assessors parcel number 32601-011 in the Dolan Springs vicinity, east of Highway 93, between Fifth Street and Seventh Street area. The commission recommended rescission by unanimous vote. Anyone care to speak to item number 36 during the public hearing? Anyone wishing to speak to item 36? Close the public hearing for item number 36. Chair would entertain a motion for...
I have a question.
Super, you'll bring action? A motion?
Motion for discussion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Supervisor Brotherton?
Okay, what, are the taxes on C2 property more than they are on AR?
I believe, but we have a professional that can answer our question.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I do not profess to be a professional or even extremely knowledgeable about taxation. But as a rule, the zone doesn't play that much into it. It's what the property is actually used for, is the primary basis for, for the taxations.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because I got a zoning change at one point in time for several people to commercial from O, and they said their taxes increased. And my point is, if it's more for the C2, then I say, leave it like it is. Don't let it go back.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Supervisor Brotherton, typically, there is a, there is an increase in value when a property rezones, and the reason for that is there is actually a cost for getting that entitlement. So, in that regard, given the increase in value of the property and how it's assessed...
It would assess for more.
Yeah, it would assess for more money, but I think most of the, the way that the tax, the assessor looks at it is, you know, what's on the property, what is it being used for? So, I think probably all those things have to come together. As I said, I, no way purport to be an expert.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might ask, Ms. Ballard...
Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What requirement, do they do anything at all to move ahead with this rezone?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Johnson, members of the board, not to my knowledge.
Thank you. I think those are the problems that I have, is when we give these rezoneings, and there's conditions, and then nobody follows through with them, what's the point in even giving them rezones if nobody's going to pay any attention to it?
Okay, I believe we have a motion and a second for the, for the discussion of item number 36. I believe this is correct. Chair would entertain a motion for action on item number 36.
I move that we rescind and cause of property revert from a C2 general commercial zone to the previous zone of AR slash 36A for failure to meet the conditions.
We have a motion and a second to revert the property to its original zoning. Is our clerk clear with that? Okay. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
Motion carried. Item number 37.
Motion to discuss?
Motion for discussion.
Second.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Let's discuss.
Chairman, the reason that this is, was brought back, I actually asked for it to be brought back at this meeting from our May 6 meeting. House Bill 2178 was to direct our treasurer to refund property taxes from, to a certain group of people. And, and I'm going to ask that this, this motion be tabled indefinitely. We are, we, the county's position is that this particular bill is...
is that this particular bill is unconstitutional. And we are working with the state, our representative and the attorney general's office to get clarification of that. And until that time, I believe we should put this on hold. And when there's something to be done, bring it back.
We have a motion and a second to table it, table it item indefinitely. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. This item will be tabled indefinitely, but can be brought back at any time.
Correct.
Item number 38, discussion, possible action, approve the recommendation of the county administrator to appoint Harry Moore as the Mojave County Public Defender effective July 1, 2013, at range 30, step six, amount of $107,556.80, and authorize up to one month's salary as reimbursement for moving expenses. Additionally, authorize the county administrator to approve an undetermined amount of time off without pay leave during the month of July to allow Mr. Moore to close and conclude his law practice in Nebraska. Chairman, entertain a motion?
I move that we approve the appointment of Harry Moore as Mojave County Public Defender effective July 1, 2013.
I second the motion.
Motion and second for the approval. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carry. Item number 40, discussion, possible action regarding the compliance with minutes, recordings, and warrants requirements of Arizona Revised Statute 11-217 as continued by the board from the April 1, May 6, May 20 meetings. Supervisor Moss?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, should I make a motion for discussion before I say anything?
Certainly.
I may, I'll move for discussion on the item 40 of the agenda.
We have a motion and a second for discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you.
As I said, said before, there was an issue regarding the compliance versus written minutes versus recording being posted on the internet. Both, as I understand it, are acceptable under Arizona law. Mojave County is doing both. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Ekstrom?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Moss, board members, I met with Mr. Timko and went through all the processes he's doing. We had a computer problem sometime in November of last year. And they had been publishing these things correctly, but as a result of that, for several months, they were not. They currently are being published correctly and provided correctly. However, there's a little bit of a lag time before they make it to the actual public notice. So, there was a problem, it's been corrected, and Mr. Timko's done everything that the law requires.
Right. And that's on the warrant segment of the...
It's on the warrant component of that.
And so, when it came to the warrant segment, some data that was supposed to have been published wasn't because of a computer glitch, but that's been corrected for the last several months.
Yes, sir.
And that's wonderful. The second reason that, or the primary, the first reason I had brought this to the board's attention was because there was a conversation with certain newspaper folks and citizens who had suggested that minutes versus recordings, we shouldn't be doing one, we should be doing the other. And as I understand it, Mojave County has a philosophy of doing both. We have written minutes and we have posted video. Is that cor, and that both of one would comply independently of the other, but we do both with a belts and suspenders approach. Is that correct, Mr. Ekstrom?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Moss, we believe that the better notice we can give, we will give. So, we give more than the law requires.
And I don't know if we really need to mo, from my perspective, that we really need to take action on this. I just wanted to bring it to the attention because if there is six people in the public asking me these questions, and there were, there's probably 600 thinking the question and they're not saying anything about it. And what it comes down is to, if the video, meeting is videotaped and posted on the internet and a permanent copy is kept, we've complied with the minutes requirements. If we have Ms. Prince take our comments and write them down, and we post her handwritten notes after our approval to the internet, we have complied with the minutes requirements. There was some legitimate concern regarding the warrant register, which has now been corrected and I trust will remain corrected. And I don't know if there's anything that necessarily else we need to do. That's my comments. Maybe someone else has something to say, but I've taken, taken enough time of everyone on this particular issue.
And you feel satisfied that we're complying with...
Oh, I'm very satisfied. I am very satisfied primarily because the information was provided and given, and that information was communicated to the public. And the question should now be answered. So, and if they don't, we all know, know the answer.
Ask and answer. Okay. Supervisor?
Yeah, very good. I'm satisfied. I saw it with my own...
Supervisor Angus? Supervisor?
Always happy.
Always happy. Well, it appears that there'll be no further discussion on this item. Is that correct?
As far as I'm concerned.
Meeting closed. Thank you very much for your attendance today, ladies and gentlemen. It's been another enjoyable morning. Mojave County, Kingman, Arizona.